You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. A special meeting in the RTM will be convened on Wednesday, July 25, 2018, at 8:00 p.m. at the Branford Fire Headquarters, 45 North Main Street, to consider and act upon the following matters. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, roll call.
Representative Edelman.
Present.
Representative Alphon.
Here.
Representative Anderson.
Here.
Representative Black.
Here.
Representative Brockett.
Here.
Representative Buchanan. Everlath, here, that's me. Representative Comey.
Here.
Representative Conklin.
Here.
Representative Diadamo.
Here.
Representative Dakhnovich. Not here. Representative Dunbar.
Here.
Representative Flanagan, here. Representative Hall.
Here.
Representative Henchel. No. Representative Ingraham.
Here.
Representative Jackson.
Here.
Representative Kelly. No, Kelly. Representative Lawler.
Here.
Representative Leonard.
Here.
Representative Lombardi.
Here.
Representative Preet.
Here.
Representative Riccio.
Here.
Representative Sandler. No. Representative Stepanik. No.
Here.
Oh, here? Did I say that right?
Please decide.
Representative Sullivan.
Here.
Representative Torelli. Representative Toohill.
Here.
Representative Walker. No, Walker? Representative Wells.
Here.
And Representative Zambrano.
Here.
Okay, it appears we have a quorum for ex officios. Let's see, is Selectman Cosgrove here? Oh, he's behind the podium. All right. And Town Clerk Arpin, and that's it. We have a quorum.
Item number two, reception of communications reports of committees and citizens petitions. We do have one. Would you like to read that, Jessica, please?
Sure, I received an email on June 26, 2018, from Vincent and Sandra Cirillo. Dear Jessica, please consider the Branford Noise Ordinance and how it pertains to excessive dog barking in residential neighborhoods. Sincerely, Vincent and Sandra Cirillo.
Okay, I will send that to the Rules and Ordinance Committee, and John, you'll get a copy of that for further. I don't have anything else other than that.
That was all.
Nothing? Okay. Item number three, to consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance that enables tax exemptions for Gold Star parents and spouses. Representative Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rules and ordinance is met on June 19 on this matter to create this ordinance relative to Gold Star tax exemptions. The committee voted unanimously to approve the ordinance. Subsequent to our approval, however, there were some concerns raised about the language in our ordinance jiving with the state enabling legislation. So, at this point, I'd like to amend the committee report to ask that the matter be re-referred to our committee for further consideration.
Second.
Second on it, okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item is re-refered. Item number four, to consider if appropriate, create an ordinance for tax exemption for handicapped equipped vehicles. Representative Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On June 19, RNO also met on this matter. We will continue to work on this ordinance, so at this point, I'd like to ask for, I would put in, before the committee, a motion to re-refere.
And that was unanimous out of the committee?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the re-referring this item? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item is re-refered. Item number five, to consider if appropriate, approve a three-year extension to a lease agreement between the Town of Branford and J&amp;J Blastings. Representative Alphon.
Microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This would renew an existing lease agreement, I'm sorry. Admin Services met on this on July 18 for a special meeting. In the meeting, we did hear from Selectman Cosgrove who explained to us that this would renew an existing lease agreement that's been in place since 2012 for use and occupancy of a piece of land at the Stony Creek Quarry. This would just agree that, extend that agreement for another three years. It did pass in committee with a six to zero unanimous vote, and I put that forward to the full body.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item carries. Item number six, to consider and if appropriate, approve the creation of an advisory committee regarding sustainability. Representative Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Though this item has been referred to Rules and Ordinance, we have not met on it as of yet, so I would ask that the matter be re-refered to our next meeting.
Second.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion to re-refere the item? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item is re-refered. Item number seven, to consider if appropriate, approve request from the general government buildings for the following budget transfer, from utilities, water, gas, and electric, $3,150, to overtime, $3,150. Representative Conklin?
Oh, you can go there.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Public Service Committee did not hear this because we held no meeting in early July, so I would like to first move that we suspend Rule 441 in this case.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion on the floor to suspend Rule 441. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rule is suspended.
Okay, the request is to move $3,150 out of the utility account for GGB and move it to overtime. And within GGB, it's within their budget, and with the extra storms this year, there was more overtime in GGB. And secondly, because of carpeting projects that had to be done outside of the normal business hours, there was extra overtime added, so I would move that we approve the transfer of $3,150 from utilities to overtime.
I'll second that.
Second, a motion to approve $3,150. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item carries. Item number eight, to consider if appropriate, approve requests from the Branford Housing Authority and Beacon Communities for the Town of Branford to grant access land to build an access road to Melrose Avenue. Representative Alphon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Admin Services again heard this at our July 18 special committee meeting. It was presented to committee by Anika Lamar and Jay Pottinger, VHA attorneys. There was a lot of discussion by RTM members that were present, as well as the committee, and it was also a packed house with residents that were there to speak for and against. The argument in favor of the Melrose extension mostly revolved around the benefit to the Town of the additional park near Sliny Fields, also some financial aid from Beacon, which was offered if we accepted this. The argument, again, centered around whether the Town should take a piece of property to Foot Park, which we just acquired, and render it unusable for future generations by sectioning it with a roof, an access road.
You can't hear me, you're speaking through the line.
Oh, I apologize. So, in committee, a motion to deny the request from the Branford Housing Authority and Beacon for access to the land to build the access road off of Melrose Ave was made, and it was passed with a four to two vote. So it was a motion to deny the original agenda item. So it was, the agenda item was actually turned down with a four to two vote, and I would put that forward to the full body.
Okay, motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Representative Sullivan?
I have that mic. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I've been reading a lot of the documentation around this item, and actually, before I start, is there a minority report that we want to get to? I don't know if we want to see that as the discussion goes forward. We can, so, we want to just do it as part of the discussion?
Yeah.
All right. And so I'm a little bit, quite honestly, I'm not really sure how this item ended up in front of us in such a controversial fashion. I mean, I feel this way mostly because I don't know why the Town hasn't already just moved forward with the road project on their own. The current request before us came from the Branford Housing Authority, and I see this as more of a nudge to spur Town Hall into action on the proposal that they had originally sent to Planning and Zoning in September 2017. As members of the RTM, we're all aware that the Town could move on this road project forward at any time. In fact, the Planning and Zoning item heard on September 7th was dealing with projects for town property improvements, and it came from the desk of our first Selectman, Jamie Cosgrove. That project at Planning and Zoning was almost identical to the one that we're hearing tonight. And I do have that letter, and I'll just read it very briefly. Dear Chairman Anders, the Town of Branford is proposing improvements to parking and access at Sliny Field. Please consider this referral at your next meeting. Thank you for your consideration. Very truly yours, James B. Cosgrove. So, at that meeting, at the Planning and Zoning meeting, according to the minutes, two town officials spoke in favor of the project, Parks and Rec Director Alex Paluzzi and Fire Marshal Sean Heffernan. These are the only two commenters on the project for the P&amp;Z minutes. Alex Paluzzi commented that the biggest current problems are access to ball fields, drainage near the rear parking lot, and parking in general at the site. Sean Heffernan commented that this project creates good flow through the property and into Foot Park, providing designated parking that also defines clear driveway for emergency vehicles to use. This is good for emergency access for Foot Park and improves parking at Sliny Field. These aren't my words, these are from the minutes of the Planning and Zoning meeting, and these are town officials who I think are experts on some of the key components of the project that we're considering tonight. I believe that the map that was used in the presentation was almost identical to what we're considering, and I believe that there's benefits to the Town in terms of public safety and organizational parking for Branford citizens that are utilizing the playing fields. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously in favor of the referral for improvements to parking and access to Sliny Field, and that favorable vote was even reported to the RTM by Moderator Flanagan at the October 2017 meeting. There was no vocal opposition by members here or even further discussion of the project at that time. So here we are tonight, and we've heard a lot of people commenting on this issue, but in fact, the Branford Soccer Club also agrees that this is beneficial project for the Town to improve parking and access to Sliny Field. The president of the club had sent a letter to the Admin Services Chair and to, I believe, some other members, and there's some quotes from participating parents in the soccer club. It is absolute chaos on those Saturday mornings when baseball also has games going on at Sliny Field. Another parent commented that the road to access Sliny Fields can actually get a bit dangerous on weeknights later in the season. These aren't my words, but the parents who are children participating in sanctioned practices and games on Town of Branford Fields. So I believe it is clear that the Town does benefit from the additional parking, drainage improvements, and other enhancements to improve public safety in the area of Sliny Fields, and I appreciate the nudge that Branford Housing Authority to get the project moving forward again. I do also believe that other bodies in Town Government should work on this project, move it through our process, and develop a budget and engineering schematics and other components. And I'm worried that a vote tonight against the project kills this beneficial project. So to that end, I would like to move to amend the committee report from voting against the request, but to refer the request to the Board of Selectmen to develop the project so that we can move Melrose Avenue Parking Improvement Project forward and increase the safety of our families and their children that are using Town-owned athletic fields.
Is there a second on the, is that a motion, Representative Sullivan?
Yes, I'd like to motion to refer to the Board of Selectmen.
All right, is there a second? Representative Jackson, discussion on the motion?
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, before us, we don't have a project to approve any roads. The basal need of the Housing Authority and Beacon is to have access across the property. Access across the property is the main question. We can't approve a project that wasn't brought to us from the Town. The Town did not bring this project to us. The project was brought by lawyers from Yale to have us push other Town entities to do a project. In my opinion, that we should be voting on, which would happen in the meeting, is that on access across the property, if we vote yes tonight for access across the property, that opens up anyone asking for a project to put that road in. Opens up the offer from Beacon and Housing Authority to give us $200,000 to it. We don't know how much the project would be. We don't know if it is truly beneficial. We've done no analysis. But, to be fair to the Housing Authority, to Beacon, they have to have an answer as whether we would ever give them access. We can build that project without ever giving them access. So to be fair to them, we must vote tonight. So I ask you to not, to vote no to the amendment, so that we may vote on access in the final amendment, the final vote. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amended?
On the amendment for the Board of Selectmen? If I may, Mr. Moderator? Yes, okay. I'll stand.
You don't have to stand.
All right, I'll sit.
You're the only two who don't have to do that.
All right. I was, I'm on the Administrative Services Committee, and that vote that evening was symbolic for me, and I'll let Dan, Representative Edelman, rather, sorry, speak to whether or not it was symbolic for him. For me, this project would be beneficial to the Town, the building of the road, it's already gone through planning and zoning, and as it came to the RTM procedurally, it should have been referred not to the Administrative Services Committee but to the Board of Selectmen. So I support the amendment to send it to the Board of Selectmen for the proper procedures so that we can get this project moving. And just to speak to the fact, if Beacon would not beacon, the Branford Housing Authority would be allowed to use the road, I hope the Town would allow them once the road is built if there was an emergency on the property. That's all.
Representative Black?
Just because the mic is a little closer here. Yeah, I mean, the project, as far as the parking project, that's not what's on our agenda. That's not what's been noticed. What's been noticed is granting access. The material that went out to us was asking for an easement in perpetuity. So, you know, this, like Ray says, a no vote on granting the easement that was proposed does not mean that we can't go forward with the parking project. I mean, it should percolate up through the Board of Recreation, probably to the Board of Selectmen, through the Board of Finance and Town Engineer, get some real pricing. At this point, this project, and I use that in quotes, it's not even in our five-year capital plan. So if the Board of Recreation decides that they want to move forward with that and start pushing it forward, they can do that. But right now, what's before us is the granting of an easement that was, came with all our materials. That's what's been noticed publicly, not a parking project. Thank you.
Representative Riccio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A couple of points. First, I'm a little bit concerned, not concerned, I have a question, I'm confused with Representative Sullivan's proposal of sending it to the Board of Selectmen. Is that, through you, Mr. Moderator, I want to make sure that's what you're asking?
Correct.
Okay. So, we have, our job here is we have the ability and the authority, according to the code, to make decisions on real estate issues. This is a real estate issue. And, so I don't know why we have to send it back to the Board of Selectmen. You know, we should be able to decide on that tonight. And I'll ask one basic question to all of you. If you all had, you all have property that you own, how would you like the Town or any organization to come to you and say, hey, we want to put an easement through your property because we want to gain access to something? I bet many of you would not like that. And that's what we're asking here. You know, we're talking about putting a, giving a third party, you know, an organization access to our property, to property that citizens pay for, and then we lose control of what we want to do with that property down the road. I think that's what, that's what this is all about. And Representative Sullivan, I think you're trying to make this political, and by sending it back to the Board of Selectmen just makes it a political issue rather than a decision that this body has the responsibility and the authority to take care of it tonight. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment by Representative Sullivan? Hearing none? All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying?
Mr. Moderator, point of order, call for a roll call vote, please.
A roll call vote?
Please.
Okay.
Okay. So?
So a yes vote, so a yes vote is in favor of the amendment by Representative Sullivan, and no vote is against it.
Representative Edelman?
Yes.
Representative Alphon?
No.
Representative Anderson?
No.
Representative Black?
No.
Representative Brockett?
Yes.
Representative Buchanan, yes. Representative Comey?
Yes.
Representative Conklin?
No.
Representative Diadamo?
No.
Representative Dunbar?
Yes.
Representative Flanagan?
No.
Doesn't vote, sorry. Representative Hall?
No.
Representative Ingraham?
No.
Representative Jackson?
Yes.
Representative Kelly, not here. Representative Lawler?
No.
Representative Leonard?
No.
Representative Lombardi?
Yes.
Representative Preet?
No.
Representative Riccio?
No.
Representative Sand, Representative Stepanik?
No.
Representative Sullivan?
Yes.
Representative Torelli?
No.
Representative Toohill?
No.
Representative Wells?
Nope.
And Representative Zambrano?
No.
The motion was defeated.
The amended motion has been defeated. We're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Representative Wells?
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to be voting against the road access this evening for several reasons. First off, there's just too many red flags for this project. First off, I find it curious that we're having to have an emergency meeting in July to discuss this. I don't see why I couldn't have waited until the next meeting. Does that mean something shady is going on? I'm not saying that, but I'm saying that it's curious and makes me wonder why we're doing it. $200,000 being offered for something that we don't know how much it's going to cost is ridiculous. When you meet with a Realtor, you don't say, "Find me a house and tell me what the price is." You find out what it's going to cost, and then you go about it. I do security consulting. If somebody called me and said, "You need to present a security plan for this building, but you can't look at the building. You don't know what it's going to cost to do it." You can't accept a bid like that. And that's what we're being asked to do here tonight. Aside from the fact that we should never be giving up an asset of the Town that we might need for future use. Dunkin' Donuts might like to put one in the middle of the green. It might do really well. People might really love it, but that doesn't mean we should put one there. We don't need to be doing things like that. It just doesn't make sense. I went to the meeting last week, 99% of the people are against this project. There's, the only people that spoke on behalf of this project were people being paid to speak on behalf of this project. And some of the people, one in particular who was speaking for it said that it was a P&amp;Z requirement to put this road in. Not once, not twice, three times he said that P&amp;Z had requested, required it. Then when he was confronted on that comment, said, "Actually, we did present it that way." So, were we deliberately misled, or did he misspeak? I don't know, but I'm telling you, it's something, it's a red flag for me not to vote for it. In addition to that, we had somebody stand up, and I'm not making this up, if you weren't here, somebody stood up and said, she came to a baseball game once last summer with her child and had a hard time parking because she had to carry a lot of bats a long way. Now, you know, I took my family to a Broadway play for Christmas a couple of years ago. I had a hard time finding a parking lot. I didn't go to New York City Hall and demand they fix the parking problem so that when I go to town, it happens. This is just, it's ridiculous on many levels. Thank you.
So Representative Wells, just for a point of information also, the $200,000 is not in the play tonight. What the RTM is being asked to is the easements portion of it only. Okay? Any further discussion on the, yes, Representative Dunbar?
As I spoke last Wednesday night, I don't think the procedure was done properly. However, I've already voted the way I voted last Wednesday, and that's not going to change this evening. I don't, I'm concerned that the vote we're taking this evening may have some effect in some way with litigation that's already in progress. I agree the timeliness of this is suspect at best. I'm concerned that any vote we take this evening, one way or the other, may be now part of whatever litigation that's going on. Yeah, I don't think we should be taking $200,000 towards a road that if we feel the need to build it, I'm sure we'll build it. But there's so much, I'll say confusion and misinformation that at least is being portrayed to all of us in different venues. There's a section of the Town that's being highly impacted, and we have to respect that. There's also the rest of the taxpayers in the Town of Branford that wind up paying for legal fees. We have one Town Board basically suing or doing litigation against another Town Board. Ultimately, who loses? We do. But I do offer this, and I'll vote against it this evening, as I did last week, because I don't believe if the people don't want it there, should it be there, and then, and the fact that we don't need to give somebody an easement for a road we can build. That being said, would it be proper in any way, based on, I'll say, the information we have all over the sides of how people feel about this, and the fact that it's been going on for three years, would it be beneficial to all of the taxpayers in Town if something as controversial it seems to be as this, if we put it? seems to be as this is we put it on the ballot for November? If ultimately, all the taxpayers in town are going to have to pay for the litigation, is it worth doing that? And I put that to you for input from anyone. It may be a way that if we ultimately wind up getting sued or having to pay, at least the townspeople got to speak. And that just seems fair. So, I submit that to you.
Representative Ingraham?
Representative Ingraham, thank you. On our rules for referendums, it's clear and not. You know, there's a procedure for adding things to the ballot, and any citizen can bring that up and champion that. You know, so that's pretty clear. There's rules in our charter, there's rules into that, changing even rules that, you know, our bonding and budgetary functions here, there's ways of having a referendum. I am, I will be voting against the, voting to reject the request tonight. Thank you.
Representative Ricchio?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Representative Dunbar, for thinking out of the box a little bit and making some good suggestions. The people have spoken. They're there. Raise your hand if you're against it. Raise your hand! So, they have spoken. And that's what this charter, that's what our charter's all about. The RTM is designed for the people to come to us and tell us how they feel. Now, you're talking about a charter revision.
Not correct.
No, he's not talking about charter revision.
Well, not a charter revision, but a change in the ordinances, okay? Which, in the way this process, you know, this body doesn't move that quickly. So, as far as this issue is concerned, the people have spoken. Just turn to your right, and they're telling us loud and clear that they don't want this easement to affect that property.
Okay.
Thank you.
Representative Edelman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To my esteemed colleague on the other side of the aisle, people have spoken, and people deserve to be heard, and most certainly, they have been heard. But Representative Dunbar's suggestion about a referendum allows all the people to be spoken. And he talked about the town, the entire town paying for this project. And although I admire your politics and political savvy and raising the crowd to applause, the segment of people here whose voices have been heard very successfully so represent their district, and their voices should be heard, and they are heard. But there is a larger part of the town also that deserves, if they're going to be in the position of having to pay for this project, also to be heard. So, I would just echo the thoughts of my fellow Democrat here.
Any other further discussion from the RTM? And just Representative Jackson?
Mr. Moderator, I admit, I'm really pretty confused about all this. The, we're talking about an easement which doesn't mean a whole lot to me, a parking lot which doesn't mean a whole lot to me. But for some reason, this easement and parking lot means an awful lot to an awful lot of people. All of whom are in the 5th District, I think. I know we're just talking about Melrose right now. But there are 50 units of housing on South Monoise Street that are badly in need of repair or...
So, Representative Jackson, are we talking about the easement portion of it? This is not, we're not going to get into Parkside.
I'm not, I'm not really...
So, don't talk about Parkside.
I'm not really talking. Were we talking about the easement? Are we talking about Parkside?
You're talking about, no, we're talking about easement of Melrose. That's what we're talking about.
Well...
Do you understand that?
Oh, I do understand it. But it's an elephant, you know? It's, we're talking about, all these people care so much about Melrose, about whether or not an ambulance can get down to get a kid who's been hit in the helmet by a baseball. They care about that so much. They care about Sliny Road being reconverted into woodland. I don't quite understand it. Anyway, what I will say is that Melrose would help the town. I don't know the legalities of all the easements, and I must admit that I'm a little put off by somebody offering us $200,000 to help put a road in. But I think that they're doing that under great pressure because they've been told that without this road, they're going to have trouble getting this project passed. And so, I think Melrose is just as simple, and for that reason, I'll be voting for it.
Okay. Any other comments from the RTM? Just to comment to Representative Jackson, granted, this is a 5th District issue, but many of the people in this room here tonight are other than the 5th District. We are the legislative body of this town. This is our jurisdiction to do it right for the people of Branford and especially our constituents out there, okay? So, that's where we're actually voting on tonight. All right. Public comment, anybody would like to speak on this item? Now, I just want to say one thing. The item is strictly the easement on Melrose. We're not going to talk about Parkside. If you want to talk about the easement on Melrose, that's fine. Just get up your, gentlemen, come up and state your name and address, sir.
Thank you. I'm Jay Pottinger. I live at 27 Thimble Farms Road in Branford, and I'm one of the lawyers for the Branford Housing Authority. And I want very briefly to speak in favor of the easement proposal. Thank you for the opportunity to do that. The proposed road will be helpful to the town of Branford. That's why the first selectman sent it to the Planning and Zoning Commission last fall. That's why the Fire Marshal and the Director of Recreation spoke in favor of it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's why the Planning and Zoning Commission gave it a unanimous favorable referral back to the town. The reason that this easement proposal is here tonight in its odd posture is because nothing happened after that. The favorable referral under Statute 8-24 just sat in the files. My client, the Branford Housing Authority, has as one of the conditions of its attempt to develop Parkside, the creation and building of this road. In an effort to kickstart the process of the town following up on its favorable referral about this road, we wrote a letter to this body asking for an easement across the road and offering to contribute $200,000 toward helping to pay for it. The representatives who have said an easement is properly before this body tonight are exactly right, and that's what we've asked for. I do need slightly to modify the way the easement was presented before. We do not need an easement in perpetuity. Everybody in this room can have an ambulance or a fire truck come to her home or his home, even if you live on a private road. The town doesn't need, I mean, the people on that road don't have to have an easement for the fire truck or the ambulance to get there. So, to the extent that emergency access to the back of a proposed Parkside Village is part of the request for the road, we don't need a perpetual easement. What we would like is a temporary easement to use that road during construction and development of Parkside Village for the construction work and for parking. It would be an easement just for the construction period. And then Branford Housing proposed to maintain and pay for keeping that road going for an extra year in the proposed agreement that we submitted to this body back in June when we sent the letter. So, Representative Black, last week, was concerned about an easement in perpetuity. That's not needed, and that's not requested. We would like that easement for us so that the Housing Authority can go forward and use that road, if it's built, for the temporary period that we're requesting. The argument for the road, however, is not about Parkside, and that's not on your agenda. The argument for the road is the need for parking, the need for emergency access, the need for better traffic flow, and the safety at night, in the winter especially, of turning on and off South Monoise onto Sliny Road. That's what the...
Let him talk.
That's what the Fire Marshal spoke about. That's what Mr. Peluzzi spoke about when they went before planning and zoning last September. That's the advantage to the town. If you look at the map, and my student, Kevin, is going to pass out just a couple of pages that may or may not be helpful to you as you think about how to vote on this. It's a fact sheet about Melrose Access. It's two maps, Map A and Map B, and the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Committee last fall, which elaborate on the comments that Mr. Sullivan quoted when he spoke earlier this evening. Map B in this packet is the town, it was prepared for the town of Branford, and it shows the proposed Melrose Access way. And I think it may help all of you to see exactly what it is before you decide to vote. The proposal goes from Melrose Avenue between Indian Neck School and the Sampson Field. It's about 100 yards long. And then, the town, when it proposed this, wanted to also have a loop back in front of the concession stand to the front parking lot of Foot Park. So, if people look at Map B, they will see that it's a little bit of a U. Down Melrose to the back of Sliny Field, and then from the front of Sliny back up to the parking lot at Foot Park. It's to improve traffic, to improve parking, to improve safety. I learned this afternoon that just last summer, there was an injury on the ball fields, and the Fire Marshal was unable to get an emergency vehicle up to serve to Sliny Field to take care of the young athlete who had been hurt. I understand that there may be other solutions. There was a lot of testimony last Wednesday about other ways to solve the problem. This is the way that the town proposed to solve the problem, and it also solves a problem for Branford Housing Authority. I don't want to make any bones about that. It meets a condition in our planning and zoning application. I spoke too long already. I hope that you approve this easement and allow the project to go forward. It will need to go forward in a proper way through the town channels. I understand that you're not voting of money or a specific plan, but the only way that the Housing Authority could make this begin to move was to ask for your help with respect to the easement. Thank you very much.
Anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Come forward, please.
I have a house on Melrose a lot. And the easement, the only thing that's going to do there is going to make it a raceway. Right now, the town has taken over Foot Park, and I could say, I lived here all my life, and there's more people using that park today than there was when the other fellows took care of it. Not because they didn't take care of it, they did, but it seems like now because it's a town park, there's more kids walking up there and people walking up there all times of the day. The traffic isn't that heavy on that road. Heaviest traffic on Melrose Avenue is 4th of July and the Easter egg hunt, because they have it at Foot Park. That's the traffic. I've never seen an ambulance go up there, because I lived here all my life. And I've never seen, you know, the fire engines or anybody else go up there. I've never seen them down there. I mean, right there, I could see Sliny Field parking. If it gets a little bit tight, they park on the grass over there, and the people do a pretty good job with no lines on it, and they keep it neat, and they go in and out. But you're going to create a raceway from his housing people are not going to use, he says they're not going to use Monoise Street to come in. They're going to use Melrose Avenue. Well, you look at Melrose Avenue, when you come up to Indian Neck, there's a corner right there. And when the people get going, you know, hey, let's face it, there's some times in the morning, they're moving right along, and you could have accidents there. And I don't understand why the town is building a road for contractors that don't pay taxes. They pay nothing, and we have to build a road. Any other contractor in the town of Branford, Mr. Cosgrove, just sold the field in front of, next to his dad's house. Did you build the road for them? Or did the contractor have to build the road?
They didn't sell it to the contractor.
You've got to build a road. Hey, here the town, we're building a road for people that don't even pay taxes. We got to foot the bill. You know, the fellow talks about the town people footing the bill. We're going to foot the bill, and it's going to screw up our neighborhood. Nobody cares about Indian Neck, I guess. I don't know. But I would hope that you people vote no for this project. It's a green area. Let it stay green. The deer graze on it. Let the deer eat the grass. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hi.
State your name and address, please.
Nancy Kendrick, 98 Indian Neck Avenue. I spoke last week, too, and I just wanted to make a couple more points. First, too, everybody's wondering about the timeframe in the special meetings, excuse me. There's been special meetings in the past. They have to meet a deadline by November 1st to the state for funding. That's why we're getting special meetings in. Second, I knew I wanted to write it down. Second, soccer, I was just talking to the soccer person. As I stated before, I'd been on Little League Board for quite a few years. Those aren't even soccer fields. They have plenty of soccer fields outside of the Little League fields. They are used in the fall when we don't have many teams. We have about three teams that play fall ball. So, the letters from soccer and stuff like that, it's hard when people are coming and going, but we've worked it out for years. It's not a regular Little League season, and it's not even soccer fields back there. Thirdly, is last week, I think it was proven without a doubt that there is no benefit to the town for this easement. The three things they are standing upon was traffic, safety, and parking. Parking, we talked about. You parked more cars down there for the fireworks. There was over 300 cars. There was 150-ish in that grassy area. That road is only making 50. Safety, I had been on the board for five years, and my kids had played before that. We never had a problem with, when I was there, any ambulances coming down. Did we have a problem with some parking at time? Yes, because some parents didn't want to have to walk, like the woman last week, with a bag, so they would try to park in the fire lane. And I have to tell you, excuse me, Parkside Village residents, along with Little League, would call the police, and they would come right down and put tickets on. We would come over the microphone and say, "The police are here. Go move your cars." So, we could take care of that with no problem. We need to enforce the parking there and have the police down there ticketing cars. Because once you get a ticket for $150, I'm sure you're going to walk the extra 100 feet with the bag. So, I think it was proven, again, all three aspects, that it is no benefit right now to the town of Branford. Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience that would like to speak? Strictly on the easement.
So, my name's Ted Zeus, 118 South Monoise Street. I've served on various boards and commissions in other towns. I'm a recent person coming to the town of Branford. And my memory is that organizations like this are in the business of approving proposals And my memory is that organizations like this are in the business of approving proposals that are brought to you by your appropriate officers of the town. In this case, if I were sitting here, I would want to be hearing from the first selectman this evening about his proposal of what he wanted to do and the comprehensive plan for developing this, whatever it would be. And I haven't seen a drawing on the board. I haven't seen a map that shows what the plan is for this piece of property. And for, and so there really isn't a proposal here tonight for you to approve, because your executive for the town has not brought something for you, for you to look at and discuss. And so I agree with the comments that were made earlier tonight by members of the RTM that the process here has not been sort of followed the way I think the people who envisioned this it would go. And so for that reason, a no vote tonight allows you to reconsider it. It might be without prejudice, and at some time, if the first selectman did deem this to be part of the master plan for the town, then you would have a chance to do that, and it would actually go through the appropriate process. The second thing I think that is worth considering is that when you enter into agreements with other entities, frequently if you borrow money from a bank, they will check your credit score, and credit is really short-term or slang for credibility. And so I have spent some time looking at this project and what's going on in that area and the credibility of the housing authority to date. And I think, as people have pointed out, that there are some red flags in terms of what's going on in that area, I would invite you to think about the credibility of the housing authority. They've recently been found in violation by the state...
Sir, we're talking about the easement. We're not going to talk about the Branford Housing Authority.
I understand, but the easement's being granted to an organization.
But stick to the issue that we're at that's on the agenda tonight.
Okay. I would encourage you to vote no. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, members of the Branford Selectmen, and I'm sorry that...
What's your name and address?
My name is Jenk Shahin. I'm the president of the Branford Soccer Club, and I live at 375 Monticello Drive, Jefferson Woods Condos. I've been with the Branford Soccer Club for, I'm going to say, 12 years now, and I've been involved in the, on the board of the club for 10 years. And with all due respect to Nancy's comments earlier with regards to Little League and baseball, you know, Branford Soccer Club does not claim, you know, long-term or heavy use of the Sliny Fields for soccer. We have other fields in town that we use for our groups. I just wanted to give you a perspective, regardless of the outcome tonight, you know, the politics of it is a little confusing to me, so really don't want to get into that. Just want to let you know, while I do agree, okay, you know, there's plenty of space over there where people can park and they can do their thing, I'm going to tell you that it's really not working for me as a sports person. I go to other towns, they have facilities, and they have plenty of parking, well-lit, it's safe, great. Sliny Field, when we use the facilities at Sliny Field in the fall for a couple of months between, I'm going to say, late August through mid-November. Parking situation's very disorganized. You know, again, I've been involved with the club for 10 years as a board member and as a parent. I've had two kids who played there. I deal with a lot of parents and other board members who, you know, who have kids who participate in programs there all the time, and I see it firsthand. And I think regardless of what happens with any vote here and any project that might be approved or not right now, I think the town might be losing an opportunity to consider that space for a very well-organized, safe, well-lit parking area or access for parents, players, sportsmen, that, whether it's soccer or baseball or softball, that's going to be using the facilities for years to come. You know, it's been there for a long time, and it's going to be there hopefully for a very long time. And looking at it right now, you don't really have to be a very keen observer to see that the parking there is not very safe and sufficient. Yeah, it was mentioned here, yes, you can park on the grass. Yeah, there's plenty of parking there, great. And if you don't abide by the rules, you get ticketed. As a visiting player from out of town, you don't know where to park. Nothing's lined. I've been told by another president of the Little League, oh yeah, you guys should move your cars in the fall, because you're going to get hit by the balls coming from the field right next door. All right, my parents didn't know that, so I'm going to tell them, don't park there. Again, there is no rhyme or reason to how it's being used right now, that parking area. And again, regardless of what happens with any easement project that's being discussed, I think the town has an opportunity to kind of consider that improvements to the parking situation really needs to be done. Not on the long term, as been mentioned, I think, but in the short term as well. Safety may not have been an issue in the past. You know, ambulances have not shown up. Great, that's a good thing, but it only takes one time for one kid to get hurt, and then your organization sues for millions of dollars. And the reason could be that the ambulance couldn't make it on time. Again, that's an extreme example, but again, this is just not working for me right now. It hasn't really worked for me for 10-plus years. It has potential to do a lot better if the town actually agrees on a project that's going to work for not only the people who live right in the area, but everybody who uses the town's facilities going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else still that would like to speak to this item?
Good evening. Carolyn Sires, 98 South Monowies. I'm going to address a few issues. I, too, Mr. Sullivan, had the opportunity today to go to the Planning and Zoning Office to try to figure out from last Wednesday to today where we are in this process. And so I picked the same papers you have, and I read them, and I read them twice, and I was a little confused. But let's go beyond what you just want to report, and let's go to the next level. In August of 2017, there was a proposal for this access road. Planning and zoning had a negative report on it. So that was the first request for an emergency-only access easement granted to Branford Housing Authority for the emergency access, in parentheses, Parkside 1, over town-owned property. So it was a negative report with the maps and everything. So that's August. Now let's follow this. So they come back in September. In September, the plan was changed, as you kindly read to everybody, I won't have to read it, and it is to improve the parking access at Sliny Field. So this one is about the access road. This is about improving the parking. So we get a positive report for that, and there's maps in the back. So everybody keeps saying the town proposed it, the town wanted it. So my question is, who paid for the maps? Did the town's engineer pay for all this? Who's paying the architect, designer, and engineer for the proposals and suggestions? So I would like to say that the town is suggesting ways to go forward with this project. They're not proposing it unless the town engineer and the town expended money for this road. So I don't know, but I'm asking to find out who paid for all this fancy maps? And there's a lot of maps, a lot of roadwork. There's a lot of spaces. So there's 50 parking spaces drawn on this. So if the town drew the 50 spaces, are they for the town of Branford people? Or did the architect and engineer for the project do it? And is that for their people? So there's a lot of ambiguity with this. So then I go one step farther, and I said, "Mr. Smith," I said, "where is the other one? Do you have it there?" And he asked me what I was talking about. And I said, "Well, last Wednesday, we had a meeting, and the Yale lawyer said, 'Oh, well, we don't need it forever. We only need it for a year, and it's just for our construction.'" I said, "So, did they go to you? Do you have that?" And he looked at me and said, "No." I said, "Well, so the whole project, you didn't know?" He said, "No, they didn't say." I said, "So then, the chairman came up and said, 'Oh, we needed another year, so we needed two years.'" So does Planning and Zoning know that it's changed for a year to two years? Or are we just going to throw it out like a Christmas catalog Sears book that you pull the page out or click on and say, "I want this. I just want this. Let's just vote on a piece of paper." So there's no continuity with it, and the changes and the flip conversation, we need to go on fact. And the fact is that you can't just decide you need it for a year or two years and come and ask somebody to vote on that without the proper authority saying, "Yeah, you can decide that." So that's, I have a big problem with that. I think we all have a problem with that. It should be voted on. We need to have a rest to this. This is out of control, what's happening. And let's stick with the facts. So if we can find, maybe the Yale lawyer has the Planning and Zoning paper that you or I couldn't find in the documents unless you found it. Did you find the, I'm being very honest, did anybody have pieces of paper like this that are, these are from the town, that state a positive or negative report on just a year or two years? Has that been found? Because if it is, I'd like a copy of it, and I'm willing to pay a fee for the copy of that. And also, I'd like the question to be discussed, who paid for the map? Because I truly know, the town just made suggestions. They're not making proposals. They're not saying, "Do this and do that," because they would have had their engineer. You would have all read a town engineer report. You would have seen the map. So that's my address to that. Then one of our gentlemen brought up, I believe Mr. Potter brought up about how the $200,000, they're going to help pay for the road, and they're going to maintain the road. But I'm going to have to tell you, I doubt that, because there's an email between the town people, it's about the access road, and let me do the dot-dot-dot and get to this. It says, "Once this project, Parkside 1 and 2 are gone, and there's a partnership, the housing authority will have no funds for any annual insurance or maintenance costs. At a minimum, there will need to be a formal agreement with the town that the town assume maintenance costs and permanently indemnifies the housing authority of anything that happens on Branford property," grant me the time, we're getting to the road, "used by the town, which will otherwise support a town usage. In parentheses, a footpath, if commonly used, needs to be maintained, not by the housing authority, and if the housing authority is sued, the town's insurance will pay for it. If this is done, permanent easement with insurance requirements," was how Thatcher from Beacon was talking this morning. And it goes on and on, "to make sure that the town pays for all the maintenance costs." So regardless of $200,000, if that's for two years or if that's in perpetuity. My suspicion is it's going to have to be in perpetuity, and my non-suspicion, my fact is, there's no money for the housing authority to pay for it, according to this. It is going to be an agreement if the town agrees for the town, which means us, the people of the town, to pay for any easements, any maintenance costs, and anything with the road. So we have enough evidence, I believe, for this board that are all pro or con. You're going to make good agreements, but for, you really should vote, yes, in favor of the committee's report that this is not a good thing for the town, unless you want to talk to us now about what the taxes raises will be? Because we know by these emails that you all, I've told you for years, you can just sit with me and I can show you. These are not my words, these are their words. The town will have to be paying for it. And I thank you for that.
Anyone else still that would like to address their body?
Hello. I'm Lehman McGee, 62 Waverly Park Road. I'm a lifelong resident of Branford, Indian Neck especially. I see no sense in doing any projects down there. But the big picture, for the long-time future, when the storm comes and it floods, you can't get in and out, so you'll be wasting your money to spend money on a road in the future that you won't be able to use. So I say no.
Okay. Nobody else wants to speak on that? Anybody, any further discussion from the RTM before we take a vote? Representative Black?
I'd like, again, on the in-perpetuity thing, I don't see how the housing authority doesn't need it in perpetuity, because if it's for emergency access, just as if you live on a private road, you have an easement over that private road. Your neighbor can't build his garage across it and block your access. If they're going to build a building there and they want fire trucks to be able to come through, then that's going to have to be in perpetuity. And the first selectman did speak to that at the committee meeting and believes that it was a condition. Now, I know there's a letter in their package that says, from some other fire expert, it may not be required, but you know, that's something, they're in litigation, presumably over other conditions. That's something that can be worked out in the litigation. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further comment from the RTM, Representative Alphon, just for clarification, a yes vote rejects the easement, a no vote approves it. And this will be a, correct, this will be a roll-call vote.
Okay.
Some clarification on the vote again, Mr. Moderator.
A yes vote, the yes vote rejects the easement with the item that's on the agenda, a no vote, you're in favor of the access easement.
Thank you. Point of order, it's a roll-call vote.
I already asked for a roll-call vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll-call vote for item number eight, as presented by Alphon. Representative Edelman?
No.
Representative Alphon?
Yes.
Representative Anderson?
Yes.
Representative Black?
Yes.
Representative Brockett?
No.
Representative Buchanan?
No.
Representative Comey?
Yes.
Representative Conklin?
Yes.
Representative Diadamo?
Yes.
Representative Dunbar?
Yes.
Representative Hall?
Yes.
Representative Ingraham?
Yes.
Representative Jackson?
No.
Representative Lawler?
Yes.
Representative Leonard?
Yes.
Representative Lombardi?
No.
Representative Preet?
Yes.
Representative Riquio?
Yes.
Representative Stepanik?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
No.
Representative Torelli?
Yes.
Representative Toohill?
Yes.
Representative Wells?
Yes.
And Representative Zambrano?
Yes.
The motion passed, because there were nine, six no votes.
Six no, and one two?
Yeah, 18 yes.
18 yeses, six nos, the easement access is defeated. Okay, moving on. Item number nine, to consider if appropriate, appropriate approval request from the town engineer for granting of an easement to frontier communications for existing equipment located behind the curb on the town property located at 46 Church Street. Representative Alphon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This was also heard on our July 18...
This was also heard on our July 18 special meeting. During construction at the community house project, it became apparent that existing equipment was inadvertently placed on town property instead of within the road right of way. It's a piece of frontier equipment, it's one of three boxes that you lose the side of the road. The easement is for a piece of property, it's six by four, it's actually a little bit less than that, total of 22 square feet. It's been there for years already. In return for the easement, Frontier agreed to do the utility pole work at no cost to the town for the community house project. This did pass in committee with a six to zero hope. I'd put that forward as a motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Representative Sullivan?
Just two questions through you, Mr. Moderator. Is this an easement in perpetuity? And did I just hear that a third party is giving the town financial benefits for their easement?
I don't know if there's any financial money exchange, but yes, the town is receiving something for this.
And it is in perpetuity?
As far as I know.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item carries. Before we do adjournment, Representative Torelli, just announcement, we will not be meeting in August. Enjoy the rest of your summer. We'll see you in September. Representative Torelli? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We adjourn.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.